Okay. We will call to order the public hearing scheduled for 5:45 PM. For the purpose of soliciting public input with respect to our request for approval of a real estate purchase and sale agreement to sell 24-30 Bank Street to M4 Investment Group LLC at a purchase price of $585,000 as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. You wish to address this board on this issue. I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have a five-minute time limit and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 413 Harpers Ferry Row, Paul Condes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condes. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. I stand here tonight asking you to support this sale. It's the right thing to do. It's part of the city's vision. It's part of the projects of the city. And it's part of the revitalization of downtown Waterbury. Please support this sale.
Next speaker from 26 Maywood Avenue, Carla Despizito.
Happy Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy Sumber, Dr. Martin Luther King Day. Number one.
Excuse me? Just state your name and address just for the record.
All right. Don't start my clock then until after my name.
Okay, you got it.
Carla Despizito, 26 Maywood here in Waterbury. There's not enough parking. Get rid of the parking meters. Get rid of Robert Rules. Sets a small frame of time for people to speak. Get rid of the districts. I voted against it when it was on the ballot years ago. I want all the aldermen to lobby the whole town and the top 15 get elected. We need to have office space for the aldermen and state and senators and representatives to be here, someone, every day of the workday so that people can just walk in and talk to them. Your peddler's license is $578 a year. Too expensive. Should be no more than $100 bucks. It's $100 to get a license for Connecticut State to be in business. So you've got to lower that. I want you to set up a cork board where people can put their piece of paper of their idea of what they want to become a law. And as we see it progress to become a law, we'll see it move along. And I'd like to see a $1 tax, maybe a $0.50 tax, I don't know, a dollar tax. Every property in Waterbury to build retaining walls, those that are keeled over, going to keel over, only a $500 fee on the homeowner, the landowner, that they pay back the $500 over five years, no interest. And there should be a summer program also in that dollar tax, a summer program of putting in sidewalks everywhere in this town and to get students, kids, helping with the construction. I think that was it. Seven, eight? Yeah, okay? So you got it all? And I did it in five minutes. Do I have any reply? That's not what this?
So, public speaker, there's no, we don't reply back to you. I apologize.
All right. Well, how will I get an answer to my eight points that I brought up here? My seven points.
We've made note of them. We'll look at them and we will gladly get back to you. Whoever your probably district person is, we'll get back to you on some of those ideas. Some of the ideas that you did say were state questions that we don't have any control over.
All right. If they are state, then yes, someone here hop on it.
Okay.
All right, that's all. Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. President, that was the last speaker for the public hearing.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing and we'll stand down till 6 o'clock. We'll start the regular meeting. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Tuesday, January 21st, 2025. If everybody will please stand for the Pledge Allegiance and a silent prayer.
Alderman Alsa?
Here.
Alderwoman Cavallo?
Here.
Alderman Dorso?
Here.
Alderman Hunter?
Here.
Alderman Lopez?
Here.
Alderman Mosley?
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy?
Here.
Alderman Nujang?
Here.
Alderman Rinaldi?
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez? Alderman Salvio?
Here.
Alderman Tallydean? Alderwoman Weaver? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Present.
Alderman Dijo Vincarlo?
Here.
Fifteen present.
Okay, we have a quorum. The next item on the agenda would be public speaking. If you wish to address this board, please sign up with our City Sheriff Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You will have a five-minute time limit and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 413 Harpers Ferry Row, Paul Condes.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Paul Condes. I reside at 413 Harpers Ferry Road. I'd like to strip through the agenda for a minute and pay homage to a great man. A man who never sought greatness but achieved it. When he looked in the mirror, he only saw the faces of those he wished to help, never himself. He was taken from us far too soon. Martin Luther King's memory will live on forever. Back to the agenda. I'd like to call your attention to item number five. The expenditure of almost $700,000 for tennis court renovations. Are you aware that pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the United States and in the world? Last year in the United States, there were 53 million people playing pickleball. Only 23 million people playing tennis. If you drive past those beautiful tennis courts, Prostec put a half a million dollars into on 69, you notice one thing, nobody's ever there. In addition, in the space of one tennis court, you could put six pickleball courts that hold 24 people instead of four for tennis that nobody's playing. Pickleball numbers are rising by 5% a year. Tennis players are dropping by one. I would like to see this item tabled, sent back for investigation and verification. And I really recommend that we put pickleball courts up instead of tennis courts that no one's going to use. Plus, they last a lot longer, they're made out of concrete, there's no net. So I'd ask that you take a look at this. It's a lot of money for items that are not going to get used. Thank you.
Next speaker from 1400 Merritton Road, Martin Spring.
Martin Spring, 1400 Merritton Road. I just wanted to say that yesterday was inauguration for President Donald J. Trump. And whether people want to like the man or not, you know, I could just have to say he's going to be our next president for the next four years. So I'm just, want to see how things are going to work out. Just hope we all work together as American citizens and work for the betterment of our country. And let's stay united. Because remember, united we stand, divided we fall. And I know there's some people in this room who probably voted for him, some didn't, but it doesn't matter, we went out and voted. But I want to welcome back the, some Republican, fellow Republicans of mine who came back home safe. So I'm glad you guys made the trip and came back home safe. I'm sorry you couldn't get it to the rotunda. I know some friends of mine couldn't do it either, so. I did want to say that, I wanted to thank the mayor and Joe Gary. I saw them at Bonnie's wake tonight, and I know Mike went too, and some other people went. And I was so happy to go. Bonnie and I go back a long time, as I said, Bonnie Rentes. And she came on my show when I was on Channel 13 many years ago. Karen and I would run the equipment there. And we did what we had to do, okay? And so Bonnie was always showing up and she was always there for a lot of people. So we ran a control room, and a lot of times, we went on with Bonnie ourselves. So I just want to let you know, let's keep Bonnie in our memory. And also, our former President Jimmy Carter, who passed away. And also, let's remember the legacy of Martin Luther King because he did a lot for a lot of people of all races, creeds in color. And he was a man for all the people, not some of the time, all the time. So let's keep that in mind. Also, I didn't get a chance to go and talk about Exchange Place that was sold recently. I understand it's going to be a very positive deal. But I'm also saying, I'm here on the street, that we shouldn't be in the real estate business. And I don't know how that goes because the government's got to get involved in some things. And so, you know, we'll see how that goes. And if we lost a little bit of money, 25,000, 30,000, 40,000, I don't want to say it's a big loss, but we got to weigh the big with the bad, you know, the good things that are going to happen down there. And it's probably going to be a lot of positive things for the city of Waterbury. So that's probably all I was going to say because I don't really have a lot of information on that. But I did want to say one thing, a Kamalistan home on Merritton Road, I live down the street from there, and I guess a developer's going to make, you know, some apartments out of it, and this empty building. And I don't know if that would be a positive thing. I don't know if it's going to be LLC like it's going to be with Exchange Place. What people don't understand, LLC means it's more than one person involved. It could be many, many people involved in LLC. And I guess that's a good thing because it seems that people have a more interest in the city of Waterbury. So that's something I think that would be very positive. But especially if they're going to be doing the apartments, as long as they're going to be, you know, reasonable apartments and that's going to be skyrocket prices for people because we do have quite a bit of homeless people in the city of Waterbury, especially veterans and homeless. And so, you know, with all those things coming in from Washington and the state and the federal government, state and local governments, maybe we could all work together to resolve that issue, okay? So also, I wanted to say, around the city of Waterbury, we have several empty stores, especially in the plazas. And hopefully, we're going to get that fixed up and cleared up and cleaned up. And also, I wanted to mention this, on Chase Avenue, in the Waterbury Plaza, and also on Wilkett Street, Net Plaza, and Colonial Plaza, and Thomas Avenue, Stop and Shop, sorry about that, and Stop and Shop in the stores around, a lot of people are parking in the fire zones. And Karen and I, we went Sunday, and I mentioned this to somebody, a good friend of mine, I don't want to say who, but recently, and I told this person that, you know, we went after church, and we went down to that area down there, and Chase Avenue, and that's the Waterbury Plaza, you know where that is? And right over there where Dollar Tree is, and the laundromat, and all the places there, I'm bringing this up to members of the Board of Aldermen. People constantly parking in front, and the fire truck tried to get by, couldn't get by, had to make a couple passes. And I don't think that's right, because if they had to go to an emergency, what are they supposed to do? These people, as far as I'm concerned, they have no respect for the law. They just don't. Because if they had any respect for the law...
One minute.
Thank you. They would not be parking in the fire zone. I wouldn't park in the fire zone. Karen wouldn't park in the fire zone. Not many people would do that. I have no idea. And then they're sitting there with their music blasting, and their kids are running around, they're out of the car, you've got the cars running, the kids are still sitting in the car. You know, guys, ladies and gentlemen, somebody got to do something about it, somebody's going to get hurt someday. I don't understand how you try, fire truck's going to go by, and the kids are running out in front of the fire truck. Come on, give me a break. You know, when I was a kid growing up in Waterbury, we respected the police, the fire department, we respected everybody. Because if I, you know, my dad was a sergeant in the army, and I'm going to tell you something. And if we went home and we did anything bad, I'd hear it from my dad. I'm telling you. My father spent eight years in the service, four years in National Guard, four years overseas.
That's time.
Okay? Thank you. So let's, let's get things resolved in Waterbury. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Okay. Mayor? Mayor, you want to speak at all? Okay. All right. Before we recess into, there is no approval of minutes. We'll take care of it at the next meeting. Mayor's not speaking. Before we recess into committees, you have three items on your desk. Number three, number three was a placeholder for a DUI enforcement grant, no cost to the city. This is the actual contract in front of you now. So that is the actual packet, the actual contract in front of you. Again, DUI grant, no cost to the city. Item number 16 is, is going to be a receiving place on file. It's the, Billy DeMata has resigned as a constable. That will be a receiving place on file. Item number 17 is a, it's a grant for Project Safe Neighborhood. On your cover sheet, that should say the year 2025, not 2024. It's for the Project Safe Neighborhood 2025 grant. This is time-sensitive, that's why it is being added right now. It had to be in by the 10th, our next meeting's not to the 10th, so rather than cutting it close, we're going to walk it on this agenda. So with that, Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to add item number 16 and item number 17 to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, the items are added, and item number 17 will be taken up by the Intergovernmental Committee. And with that, we will recess into committees, and we'll start with Finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order item number one. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a refund request for Sunrun Juvelinda Farrar in the amount of $517.50 for permit PR 2023 0004097, 22 Buckingham Street, Waterbury, Connecticut. Permit canceled, no work done as submitted by Frank Baker acting building official. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number two, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a budget transfer within the city's water pollution capital improvement fund in the amount of $100,000 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025, as submitted by Sarah R. Gary, manager of budget development and oversight. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the transfer.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Under the Standing Committee, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $37,406.60, as submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refunds, is read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting. We're going to start with old business item number one. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement to sell 24-30 Bank Street to M4 Investment Group LLC at a purchase price of $585,000, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Hello, how you doing? Who's taking over? Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is, what are the ideas to do in that property right there?
So the proposal that we have is, for the developer to purchase it, he's going to put in about $2 to $3 million in investments. The upper floors, he's looking at 25 apartments, 19 one-bedroom, and about six studio apartments, and then doing work on the first floor to revitalize the commercial space that's down there, fix up that restaurant. And I understand he also intends to have an area down there for a security guard that's in there. So it fits in with what we've been trying to do with downtown, which is the mixed residential, commercial, and restaurant-type space that's down there. So, and it also, as part of that, will clean up, if you remember, that building is the standalone building, is part of the larger office building, that plaza in the middle there will get cleaned up and spruced up a bit as well, so.
Are these apartments going to be market value apartments, or do they have an idea?
Market rate apartments.
Market, okay.
As far as I, as I understand it right now, it's market rate apartments, right?
Are they doing any tax abatement, or?
I don't, do we, I don't think he's applied for a tax abatement at this point, so no.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. So we'll proceed with the regular agenda, starting with item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Municipal Police Department DUI Enforcement Grant FY 2025. The total grant amount is $157,786.32, covering the period of 1/30/25 to 9/6/25. The grant will reimburse the city at 100% with no matching funds required, as submitted by Richard Thomas Davis, Deputy Chief of Police, Waterbury Department of Police Services. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Hi.
Brian Gresz, Waterbury Police Department.
Thanks for coming. I just have, can you provide us with any sort of statistics on estimated increases throughout the past two years? Like, are we significantly increasing in DUIs over the years, or are we kind of?
2024, we, Waterbury Police Department had 141 DUI arrests, 141. The year prior, we had 67. We've been sitting around 60s for probably the past four or five years, so.
Okay.
Increased manpower last year. We've increased staffing in our traffic unit. And then in addition to the, this grant, which we get yearly, helps us increase those numbers significantly.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Are this, will you be planning to use this for traffic stops in, like, how can I say it? To check, checkpoints in the city?
Yep, we have two checkpoints planned per month until the end of September, or the beginning of September.
Okay. No, my question, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number three? Hearing none, thank you for your time. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number four, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an engineer agreement for engineering on-call services between the city of Waterbury and Tata and Howard, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, project manager DPW. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number five, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a construction contract between the city of Waterbury and Classic Turf Company LLC in the amount of $690,000 for Chase Park tennis court improvements, as submitted by Thomas F. Crowe, Civil Engineer II, Department of Engineering. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thank you for recognizing me. I think I just have a question on the courts themselves. Last time talking to the director of the parks, he was explaining how now we can have lines for pickleball courts as well as tennis.
These will be spruced up, but inside the tennis courts will be pickleball courts as well.
Okay.
So without redoing the whole thing, you could utilize the tennis courts. We also have them right now at Kennedy and at Fulton Park as well, the same setup, where the pickleball is like an insert within the tennis courts.
Okay. That was my question to answer the public speaker, so thank you.
Great. Any further discussion on item number five? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number six, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the tax abatement agreement with Laurel Estates Preservation LLC pursuant to City Code of Ordinance 32.16 and pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 8-215. Laurel Estate Preservation LLC proposes to purchase the Laurel Estate 276-unit low-income housing complex located at 173 Bucks Hill Road from Cooper Village Limited Partnership and invest in excess of $17 million to rehabilitate the property, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Going back to this, how many years the, the tax abatement is going to be at for?
So the tax abatement in this case corresponds with the affordability restrictions that HUD puts on, which are 20-year restrictions, so it'll go through that period. What this is, is it's an affordable housing project that is at the end of its affordability period. And so new buyers have purchased the property, their intent is to put $17 million in to rehab it, keep it affordable, it'll have new 20-year restrictions. And what this agreement does is, because it's so low income, HUD has a requirement that they can only increase in accordance with the expenses on an annual basis in accordance with a HUD formula, which runs maybe 3% a year. So what they're requesting is that we agree that the tax increase on this will not exceed those increases allowed by HUD, so that they can continue to keep it affordable, because they can't just raise their rates to meet the costs. So we've agreed to do that. Now, the key is, we don't know, while it is an abatement, if our taxes don't increase by that number, it doesn't become an issue, it's just that they can't exceed that number. And if the, the taxes won't go down. So they're set at what the current tax rate is, and then they should continue to go up, but in accordance with what the HUD expense increases will allow at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
Thanks for recognizing me. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
So for the next two years with our tax increases that we have scheduled, do they go above the HUD number that we know of?
I think they're going to go in and do the work and the rest of it, so I think they may be kicking in with this as those increases go in, so that they're not starting, I think, right now with it, it'll be once the repairs are completed, so.
All right.
But we should not run, typically, once we get there, they should not, they should run about right. It's hard to predict what the future is going to look like, but as I said, at the end of the day, the point of this is to be able to keep the cost down so it can be affordable. Otherwise, they have to pay, you know, a huge increase in taxes if that were to happen. There's only so much income that an affordable housing project generates, because the rents are set by HUD, you can't change it, keep it affordable, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number seven, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the city's application and purchase of group-term life insurance, AD&amp;D, and long-term disability coverage policies with the standard, effective February 1st, 2025, with rates guaranteed until July 1st, 2028, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman?
I just have a question, Mr. LeBlanc, on the difference in coverage. Like, is our coverage changing? I saw that we talked about the rates changing, but...
No, the coverage requirements are not changing. The majority of the coverage requirements are established in collective bargaining agreements with the various city and board of aid unions.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight, your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an agreement with capital tax recovery for professional services related to the identification of motor vehicles not properly registered in the city of Waterbury. Said agreement is for a three-year term, which will commence on February 1st, 2025, and terminate on January 31st, 2028. The compensation for capital tax recovery will be 40% of the total taxes, penalties, and interest billed and collected and received by the city, including a $50 fee for each vehicle in the event said fee is paid to and collected by the city, as submitted by Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Question. Out-of-state plates will be, be able to do this, or just only for Connecticut residents and city residents? When you detect?
It's both. To the extent that through their process of identifying vehicles, whether they're in-state or out-of-state, that are not properly registered, and they've established the basis of the domain of residency here in the city of Waterbury, then they would, through their efforts, look to identify the responsible party, see if they're willing to comply with the registration requirements and the payment of the associated taxes. And if not, in either case, they're going to be added to the grand list, and a property tax bill will be issued for a period of years associated with the timeframe that they believe the vehicle should have been registered here in the city of Waterbury.
So what they, what they would be doing with this is, they found a vehicle, though... So what they, what they would be doing with this is, they found a vehicle, they'll tag it, or they'll put a boot on it, or how that's gonna work?
No, they, uh, they would, uh, reach out, uh, to the, uh, the registered party, um, and, uh, present their case, if you will, to that, uh, individual. Um, and at that point, the individual, uh, if they respond, they would be asked to provide documentation, uh, to counter the argument that, uh, their vehicle should be registered here in the City of Waterbury, um, with, again, the domain of residency here in the City of Waterbury. To the extent that, uh, if the party is able to provide adequate documentation, uh, that this company is incorrect, uh, then nothing will happen at that point in time. To the extent that they're unable to provide substantive documentation, uh, it would result in, uh, the, uh, tax assessment being added to the grand list. There would be an associated property tax bill that would be issued. Um, and then, in, as the time unfolds from that point, if, if the property taxes that have been billed are not paid, then there is an option at that point in time where they potentially could be picked up through the booting program.
So the company is not gonna charge anything to the city until they resolve the issue of this registration?
Yeah, they're, uh, the only way that this company will receive any compensation is if the amounts that have been added to the grand list and billed are paid. Uh, so, um, the associated revenue from the payments would come into the city, uh, through its tax office, and then, uh, this company would receive their proportionate share of the collections that are established within the agreement.
So that's only, the 40% will be the only payment for them until they, it's resolved?
And the only other proponent in addition to that, there's a, a $50 one-time fee, uh, and if it's, uh, collected, uh, then that amount will be remitted to this company.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve Amendment 1 to the Professional Services Agreement with Linguistica International to provide phone and/or video on-demand translation services, as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. And I should say that this item and the other Board of Ed items, uh, were approved at their last regular meeting. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. I just have a question about, um, can you just give us a recap on what we use these services for? Like, obviously, I understand it's for translation, but what are some scenarios that we use it for?
Yes. Thank you. So this is used mostly in PPTs.
Excuse me, just your name, sorry.
Nick Albini, Chief Operating Officer, Board of Education. Many times when there's a PPT in special ed cases, uh, we need, uh, translation services. It could be used in expulsions, it could be used in suspensions. When we, uh, signed the contract three years ago, we put in $50,000, uh, thinking that would be sufficient, but we far outused that, and we're at a pace of about $20,000 per year. So it's a very, very valuable, uh, tool for us, um, making contact with parents, um, and, um, we will probably go out to bid again for something like this, about 115 languages that we use.
Do we have translators at schools at all? Like, one per school or anything like that?
Not translators, but we may have someone in the staff that has, um, that are fluent in a language, but there are more times than not, some of the languages we don't have, Albanian or Portuguese and some other ones. That being said, you're also taking them, taking them away from their line of work, so it's quite inefficient. This is very, very much efficient for us.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number nine? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 10. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a professional services agreement at no cost with Area Cooperative Educational Services Corporation to provide fiduciary agent and administration support with respect to the Learner Engagement Attendance Program Grant, as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 11. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a professional services agreement under RFP number 8241 with SLR International Corporation for a three-year period and in the not-to-exceed amount of $24,500 to provide on-call environmental services and AHIRA inspection, as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me. Hi.
Hi.
Um, can we have an example of what an on-call environmental service would be?
So, this is, um, a company that we went through the RFP process, were approved. Uh, there were about five bidders. They were the most qualified and the best cost. They will come into each school, and they will do an asbestos analysis as required, um, by law, every six months. And then at the end of three years, they'll do a final report that is submitted. Uh, this report has to be on file at each school, so that parents can view, um, at any time staff. And, um, it doesn't remove the asbestos, it identifies the asbestos that is there, making sure that it's not being disturbed in any way. So if we were going to do some construction work in there, we'd wanna make sure that if they came back six months later, that that was not disturbed without going through the proper procedures.
Okay, so there's no real on-call service? It's more just the analysis and reporting and having, okay, I misunderstood that. And then, do we have any buildings that are close to being at risk with the, um, asbestos levels, or construction, or any concerns that we have moving into the new year with remodeling that we're doing, or?
Well, let's, uh, let's say that we have some very old buildings, so we know that there is some asbestos and some lead in the buildings. As long as we do not disturb any of that, we're okay. We will be doing, uh, an air quality analysis soon, as well as required by law. It's called IAQ, Indoor Air Quality Analysis. And we have to complete 20% of our schools per year over a five-year period. So when we were going through all these, um, uh, heating and ventilation projects, we had to bring in companies to make sure that, uh, everyone was notified, the air quality was tested before and after, so that it does pass for safety for staff and students.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion on item number 11? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 12. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following three resolutions, which will allow the Board of Education to submit the school construction grant application to the Department of Administrative Services for the state's consideration, as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education, to wit. Resolution 1, resolve that the Board of Alderman authorizes the Waterbury Public Schools and the Waterbury Board of Education to apply for the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the proposed Bergen Education Complex. Resolution 2, resolve that the following members are hereby established as the Building Committee with regard to the proposed Bergen Education Complex: Latoya Ireland, Elizabeth Brown, Jacqueline Jackson, Rocco Orso, and Melissa Serrano Adorno. Resolution 3, resolve that the Board of Alderman authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the board, uh, for the proposed Bergen Education Complex. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me again. Um, concerning, uh, Resolution Number 2 with the people who've been appointed from the, or the commissioners that have been appointed to the Building Committee, what does that Building Committee look like? Like, most of those people don't have building experience, right? So what are we doing to support them? How often do they meet on this? Who's going to be giving them? What kind of information?
So, they'll be part of the bidding process. Uh, so last year, when we did the Kennedy, Tinker, and Sprague groups, uh, we had Board of Education Commissioners involved with our architect, who was really spearheading this. He's the brain trust behind this. He designs it, uh, he develops a lot of the questions and the purview, what we, what we would be looking for, the warranty, types of materials used, and the Board of Education Building Committee, I believe there's five, that will participate in this. They'll have their own set of questions that they may ask, timeframe, uh, is there an insulation value? Is there, uh, savings with, uh, heating, heating and air conditioning? So, they may not be versed in it, but they're part of this because it's a requirement from DAS. So we cannot proceed without these three resolutions.
Sure. And I think that's important, that they're involved, they just wanted to understand the process.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so the architect, we hire. It's not a city architect, correct?
Correct. And that was an RFP.
Right.
And Rosa had won that, uh, that bid. They've been awarded.
And then, so who else is on this team? So we have a Board of Education Commissioners working with a hired architect. What other city groups are involved?
I will be on that. Um, the, um, Mike Knopka, our Building Inspector, will be on that, and the architect, and, um, if, he may bring an engineer with him as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number 13. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the St. Lucy's Community Health Resources Center Notice of Federal Interest Form, CRT 24-179, to be submitted to the Health Resources and Services Administration for the congressionally-directed spending grant funds for the construction costs associated with the renovation of the existing St. Lucy's Church Community Health Resource Center, as submitted by Ashling McGuckin, Director of Health Department, Director of Health, Department of Public Health. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
How you doing?
Good evening. Ashling McGuckin, Director of Health.
My question is, I know, um, it's a $5 million project, uh, uh, grant, right? Uh, for St. Lucy's. So you, what's the timeframe that you guys have to use this money?
Uh, the timeframe, um, is three years, but, um, that's actually a really good question. I'll get back to you.
That's okay, no problem.
Sorry.
So, and this is for the Center for Health in, in St. Lucy's? Uh, can, tell us a little bit of what, uh, the purpose of this is gonna be?
Sure. Um, so this is a project that we've been working on for a while, seeking multiple sources of funding. The intent is to develop the St. Lucy's Church building into a multi-service community health resource center. So we would be, um, contracting out to other parties who are direct service providers, like a federally qualified health center, to deliver, um, medical services, dental services, and behavioral health services. In the architectural plans that we've developed, we've also put aside space for the public to use areas for meetings, or, um, to have children be able to receive tutoring. Um, we have a space dedicated for, um, uh, parents who may be breastfeeding or chest feeding, so a lactation room, um, a meditation room, space that's, um, intended to really bring the community together and use the space as more than just a, uh, medical building. Um, one of the intentions is for the space to serve as a convening area in that area, in that neighborhood, um, for nonprofit organizations who may want to see clients there. So making it a multipurpose space is why we're calling it a community health resource center rather than just a community health center.
Is it fully gonna have a cost to use these facilities?
It will, for use for medical purposes, certainly, yes. Um, but for those other purposes I mentioned, there won't be a cost.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And I'll get back to you with the question about the, the timeframe.
No problem.
I think it's changed, the reason I'm cautious is because I think it's changed based on when the funding was actually given to us. Um, I think that changed our, our approximate timeline.
By any chance, do you know the, uh, percentage of the interest for this, uh, amount?
They, um, the way that it's worded in the, the language of the documents that we received with it, it's going to be a percentage based on the final appreciation or appraisal value of the, the constructed building.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. Hi. What does our timeline look like for this project?
We're still seeking funds, so it's really hard to say. Um, I think we're intending to use this initial $5 million to put out an RFP for initial construction, just to seal the envelope of the building and make it energy-efficient while we seek the additional funds to really do all of those other services, um, build out that, that I mentioned.
So do we, we don't have any drawings or anything, or any?
We have drawings. We just don't have funds to go along with the drawings.
So we have like a goal that we wanna get to? Okay. All right, thank you.
The estimate that, um, we submitted with this application was 16 million. We applied for 15 million. We got five. So we're continuing to apply for our funds as they come available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on item number 13? Thanks. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. And item number 17. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve a request to apply for funding under the Project Safe Neighborhood 2025 Grant in the amount of $33,000 with no match required, as submitted by Lieutenant Andrea DiAgostino, Waterbury Department of Police Services. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thanks for recognizing me. Hi, Lieutenant, how are you?
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Andrea DiAgostino.
I just have a question on this. Um, how are these programs running? Have we been successful? Do you have any kind of statistics for us?
So, I just wanna clarify something, um, first. It's actually the PSN 24, this will be your 24. There was a little bit of a confusion on, on our end because it was walked on, and the, uh, 2025 was just announced within the last few days, so there were a lot of discussions going on. So it's actually PSN 24. As far as the requests that, um, are submitted for the $33,000, one of them is for equipment. The other one is for upcoming training, uh, that we have a period up until 2027 to exhaust the funds. And then the last one would be for the overtime costs associated with the gun buyback program. The gun buyback program has been successful in the past. Um, I believe last year, we took in, I can get the exact number, but I believe it was approximately 75 firearms over the two different, uh, programs that we ran. And then we've done it consecutively the last few years.
Okay. And we don't get any sort of kickback or any sort of payment in, for that, right?
No.
This is just for, to get weapons off the street? All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Is that here?
No.
Oh, okay. Uh, thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. And that is all the items for the Intergovernmental Committee. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Okay, and with that, we will return to the regular order of business. Uh, items number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are on consent to approve. Item number fourteen is receiving place on file, item number fifteen is receiving place on file, item sixteen is receiving place on file, item number seventeen is on consent to approve, and unfinished business, item number one is on consent to approve. Alderman Mosley, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, consent calendar is read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, are there any discussion, any, um, additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Alderman Nujem.
I would like to take this, uh, off the consent calendar, please, this item.
What item?
Uh, the-
Unfinished item?
Unfinished business number one, yes.
All right. Any other items? Any further discussion? Hearing none. The motion on the floor is to approve the consent calendar as read, minus, minus unfinished business item number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the consent calendar is approved with respect to unfinished business item number one. Um, is there a motion to, uh, um, excuse me? George, wanna recuse yourself?
Yes, I'd like to recuse myself from this item.
Excuse me?
I'd like to recuse myself from this item.
Yes, go ahead, you're good. With respect to unfinished business item number one, um, is there a motion to approve item, unfinished business item number one?
Second.
Second, motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving item number, unfinished business number one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and unfinished business is passed. With respect to the standing committee, the chair would recognize Alderman Michael Salvio, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of thirty-seven thousand four hundred and six dollars and sixty cents, as submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alderman Mosley, seconded by Alderman Lopez. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the tax refunds, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the refunds are approved. With that, that is our business for the evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Mosley.
Yes, thank you for recognizing me, Mr. President, and just want to say, um, really to everyone, and especially to those watching, I want to thank the city, um, during these cold, frigid times, want to thank city for opening its warming centers, and I will encourage people to take advantage of them. They're here, um, they're here for our residents and, and those that occupy the city, and, uh, we just encourage individuals to take advantage. We want to thank the city as well for, for having those and maintaining those.
Anything further? Alderman Alseth, did you want to ask something?
Yes, sir. Regarding the, uh, report, uh, the, uh, the-
Is your mic on, Alderman Alseth? I'm sorry, is your mic on? Okay, no problem.
Somebody help me out, it's on a receiving place on file. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Uh, fourteen?
I'll go with that, yeah. Sorry. On item number fourteen, I'm going to have some questions on that. Uh, my understanding is we're going to have a separate meeting to discuss that?
So, yeah, there's, first of all, there's no discussion on receiving place on files, but we, Sarah Gary has, uh, Alderman Zimmerman asked for somewhat of a halfway budget report, we don't normally do it, uh, we did talk to, uh, Sarah Gary, she's been willing to do it, uh, so the February tenth meeting, Sarah's going to come in and give us a, a midway update, um, try to get her the questions up i- in advance, please, in an email if you possibly could.
Well, that's what I was going to ask, you know, who do we submit the, we submit the questions directly to Sarah?
Yes, please, yeah, if you would like to email her directly, I would appreciate that, and then, uh, that, at that night, she'll be able to, you know, just go through it quickly, so we're not, it's not a budget hearing, we're not going to spend all night, but she's been, she's willing, I know Alderman Zimmerman has some questions, so hopefully, everybody will have their questions to her, uh, have them to her early, she'll give us a quick update, answer any questions that you have, and if we can get them to her in advance, that'd be great, and maybe, you know, do it before the Alderman meeting, but she-
I will, I'll, I'll address it by line item, so that they understand what I'm looking for.
You're good. Anything further? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
I'd just like to think, um, and give recognition to Bill DeMata for his years of service. Not only was he a constable, he was on a lot of committees for the city, on the Republican Town Committee and other, uh, organizations that really made an impact to our city in a positive way, so, thank you, Bill DeMata.
And I do want to take care of one housekeeping business. I did, um, recuse Alderman Nujem a little too early, uh, per Robert's rules, you got to give a, uh, a reason for your, for your abstaining from the vote, just to, if you don't mind, just why you abstain from item, unfinished business item number one?
I actually have a business relationship with the applicant, so I'd like to recuse myself from it.
Thank you, just to make note of that, Angela, I appreciate that. With that, anything further? Alderman Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm, I'm a bit, um, confused on item fourteen, there'd be, what is the purpose? This is the quarterly report, what are we?
So, no, I just turned item fourteen into what we're going to be doing on the budget hearing. Uh, he has questions on the budgets, on, on some line i- uh, line items where he believes he sees a deficit, where we're falling behind, and he can gladly tie that into the update that Sarah's going to give us, that's all. So, he's, he's got some budget questions on a receiving place on file, which we don't, which we don't discuss, so, best course of action is to just forward those questions to Sarah, we'll take care of it in, uh, on the tenth, when she gives a little bit of a budget update. Again, something we don't do, we're going to agree to do it, Alderman Zimmerman want to do it, I think that, if it goes smoothly, it's something we can do, uh, uh, you know, more often, but that's what the other side has requested, so, I'm willing to meet their needs if we can, you know, stay within the, hopefully, the guidelines here and get it done quick, okay?
Thanks.
Yeah, I'm just going to comment quickly to explain, I just asked, Sarah's in all of these meetings, getting all of the updates from all of our departments on where we stand financially, whether we're in a good position, or we need more money, or we're short here, so I just asked that, before the budget, we have like kind of a one-time-a-year-in-the-middle-of-the-year update on where we stand.
So, if I need to clarify, that is the quarterly report?
Correct.
Thank you.
Right, except I'd like a conversation-
It's correct, it is the quarterly report, but I believe a couple of members are, are having trouble, um, uh, you know, understanding them, so we'll, we'll give them a quick shot here and try to, uh, take care of some of the questions, and hopefully, going forward, the report should be, you know, suffice and be good enough. Yes, Alderman Alseth?
No problems understanding it, just want to understand how we got the deficits and what's going on, that's all. An explanation is all.
Sure, okay, I think we-
I can understand a minus and a plus, I'm good enough for that.
Wait, we just want to have a conversation as a group, we understand what's going on.
So, listen, listen, I've, I've granted it-
I don't mean to sound offensive.
You guys asked for it, we're going to, we're going to take care of it, we're going to do it, we're-
Thank you, appreciate it.
You know, I, I, you have questions, Alderman Lopez has questions, we're just, we're just trying to figure, again, it is, it is given to you in, in the packet, so, so going forward, after this explanation, maybe we can, you know, maybe we'll all understand it a little bit better, I, you say you understand it, there has been some language where you thought we were in a deficit, we were in a surplus, I don't want to, I'm not trying to embarrass anything, I think this will take care of any questions for any Alderman here or Alderwoman, then we can move forward, I think, with the, the knowledge that all, all the Alderman are understanding that, that quarterly report as it comes out, okay? It's not a shot at anybody, it's not a insult to anybody, it's-
I don't want anyone walking out of here tonight thinking that we have a deficit, there is no deficit in this budget, we're going to have a surplus this year.
This is just for pure communication that we're all talking.
I heard the word deficit tonight, where did we get to a deficit?
So, there's not-
There is no deficit.
So, on certain line items, people believe they-
That's not what I was saying, and I-
Alderman Alseth, Alderman Alseth, listen, let's, let's get recognized first, but, uh, and there are some questions on some line items where they believe we're short, and they're going to question it, and we've agreed to do the, the budget update, just to try to help, I, I don't know any other way to explain it, guys, if, if you believe you're having problems reading it, then we're going to have a halfway point budget reading, and I'm willing to do it to make sure everybody feels comfortable moving forward about our, about our finances, okay? Anything else? Hearing none. Alderwoman Martinez McCarthy?
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Wait, let me get this straight, just because we get-